Welcome to About the Facts Podcast with Brittany and Mike. A podcast designed to educate, navigate, and empower you to become an advocate for your family, yourself, and your community. We uncover the facts and dive into the issues that prevent people like you and me from thriving. You'll gain the tools and the insights to ask the right questions, challenge the system, and stand up for what's right. Get ready to be informed, inspired, and empowered because the power to advocate starts with you. Let's get to it.
It's an amazing day and welcome to About the Facts Podcast. We're so excited to be here. I'm your host, Mike Shelton.
And I'm Brittany Grant and we are so excited to be here. We have dropped our first introductory episode. And if you're just tuning in, About the Facts Podcast is an interview-based podcast where we bring in thought leaders, subject matter experts, change agents, and politicians so they can talk about what really affects our day-to-day lives and our families. We want to make sure that this podcast, we are educating you, we're helping you to navigate different systems, so the barriers to systems, the bureaucratic red tape, and to make sure that we're aligning you with resources that you need to be a self-advocate.
Absolutely. Being a self-advocate is so important. Unlike a lot of people, I don't have the money to pay for an attorney.
Yeah.
And so it is so important that we empower people to ensure that they can navigate these systems themselves to be able to help their children, to be able to help their parents, to be able to help themselves go through this government red tape, get benefits that they should be getting because so many people just give up when they are involved in this just because it gets hard. And really, unfortunately, some of those systems are set up where people give up because they don't want to go through because it's hard.
Absolutely. And a lot of times we get our news from social media. So this podcast is about bringing in actual people that are going to tell us what their thoughts are.
Real news.
Real news.
Real news, hearing it directly from the horse's mouth.
Absolutely.
Get rid of that fake news.
No fake news. We're not, no fake news.
No fake news. Because there's a lot of fake news. And people, I can tell you this, I don't know about you, but my parents, my parents sometimes answer the phone when, when the car warranty people call and they talk to those people. And the fact of it is, is so many of those are scams. And, and by making sure we empower those, those people to make sure that they know that these are scams, I think that we help our community.
Absolutely. So we're going to focus on making sure we bring those people to you so you can hear straight from them. Our next couple of episodes is going to focus on a local race because those local races, local politics really affect our day-to-day lives. So we have what we call a special election.
Yeah, we do have a special election. And let me just say that I'm so excited about election time and unfortunately, we're just coming out of a tough election. Presidential election that a lot of people were elected, but all eyes were on the president. And there's winners and there's losers. There's people that are happy. There's people that are sad. But the fact is, is that it is so important that we encourage people not to put their head in the sand. We want people to get more active rather than throwing their hands up and giving up. I've heard people over and over say, hey, I'm done with politics. They're disenchanted. They're turning off the TV. But, but it is these elections that count more in their life. It's these small elections. Matter of fact, we got three main elections going on in this Oklahoma City and, and that's unfair. We have multiple elections happening in the Oklahoma City area, but we're going to be focused on a couple. We're going to be focused on city council, Ward Seven. We're going to be focused on county commissioner. We're going to be focused on school board chair, Oklahoma City School Board Chair. And those are the things that affect our lives every day. And we want to make sure on February 11th, Tuesday, February 11th, that we are working to make sure that everybody's getting out to the polls. I want to see thousands of people show up just like they show up for the president because this is the elections that matter.
Yes, the elections that affect your day-to-day lives, so your communities. What your, what does your community look like? So we are.
Man, there must be somebody here.
We are breaking in.
Our first interview.
First interview. This is Mr. Masood Haq coming in. He is running for council person for Ward Seven. Welcome in.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
I appreciate you having me and councilman is just fine.
Councilman, okay. I know we've got some, some women running, so I just want to make sure that we, we make sure everybody feels included, but welcome in.
No, thank you so much.
We appreciate you taking time out to join us and we are really excited. And I'm going to tell you, you're our first, our first guest.
Hey, you know, I, I can appreciate that. I don't mind being first. I like first. You know, my, my last name, my phonetic full last name is A B D. So my whole life, I'm used to being called first. So I'm used to being excellent out the gate, setting a good example.
Well, we're going to just, we want to just ask you some questions. We're going to give you a platform to talk about you, talk about your platform of your campaign. We want to make sure that you are, have an opportunity to speak to the people. And so we're going to ask you some questions and just to let you know, we're going to be having your opponents on here and they'll get about the same questions. And, and we want to make sure that everybody gets a fair hearing.
I love it. I love it. Let's do it.
All right. So tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, so my name is Masood Abdul Haq, but I didn't think a hyphenated name would look good on a yard sign. And the most important part is the last part. I mean, it's a, it's a word that means truth. It's something that's guided me, you know, throughout my life and my career. You know, I like to start out with who I'm not, you know, I'm not somebody who grew up and went to high school here. You know, I, I've heard people try to hold that against me, but I'll tell you why. It's not a, to me, it's, it's, it's a reason to consider me as, as a strong candidate. I did grow up in Atlanta, Georgia, went to the same high school as Martin Luther the King himself. You know, Washington High School in Atlanta. But to me, Atlanta is, is, is an example, a shining example of what black leadership, what black power, what black, you know, excellence looks like. And, and growing up right there in the middle of it, I'm not somebody who's going to tell you I'm from Atlanta and then they ask me where and it's going to be like Stone Mountain somewhere. Like I grew up in, in Atlanta, like right next to the AUC. And, and we talk a lot about Dr. King, but a lot of people don't know that some of his contemporaries, some of his, his circle, some of his compadres, if you will, they were very powerful men. You know, Ralph David Abernathy, Hosea Williams, Andrew Young, people like that. And these are people who are accessible to us as young people and they taught us the importance of, of, of leadership, of service, service leadership, right? Hosea Williams was one in particular who inspired me. He, he gives away a lot of food to the homeless people every year and they do a, a lot of great in the community. And I've always kind of inspire, aspire to be that way. Didn't take a traditional track path through, through education. You know, I, I had, my parents got divorced when I was about 14 and I had a little hiccup in my behavioral journey. Yeah, yeah. So that was, that was tough on me. It was tough at 14. So I, I lashed out, fighting a lot and you know, I ended up being a Golden Gloves boxer. So I liked to fight. I liked to, I liked to, you know, I'm a strategist. I'm a chess player. And during that time, you know, I, I expressed it in a, in a way that wasn't conducive. But what it did is it set me on this trajectory to where I am now. Because I was able to, you know, go to a school with, with smaller classroom sizes. You know, I, I see the benefit of it. They called it an alternative school. But you know, it was, it was smaller classroom sizes, focused educators. And they brought people in from the community that would come in and inspire and speak to us like adults on an, on an everyday basis. And there was one gentleman in particular, his name was Mr. Tony. And I don't, I don't remember his last name right now, but Mr. Tony came in every week dressed to the nines with the cuff links, you know, you know, everything like this. Yeah, the type, you know, I was just like, Mr. Tony is clean. And he didn't look at us. He didn't talk to us like little people. He spoke to us like adults. He looked us in the eye and, and he impressed upon us like you can do what I'm doing and then beyond. If you just get your priorities in order, you take time serious, you take yourself serious, you take your addiction, your, your, your posture serious. And then people will see you how you're supposed to make, how, how you're supposed to be. And I always said, you know, after that, I, I was, I was an exemplary student, you know, I turned my life around a little bit at that time. And I was featured on the news for, you know, a success story and all that kind of stuff. But what I'm telling you all this because I, I had great examples of what leadership could look like. And I always knew I wanted to be a family man, you know, I set a goal of having my first child before I was 30. And I didn't want any illegitimate children. So marriage was important to me. Family was important to me. Given that my family was a little bit of, you know, spread out. I wouldn't say broken or fractured, but we just, we weren't as close knit as I would have preferred. So I sought out a, a young lady who had that type of family. And I found my wife, you guys know her as Dr. Jihan. She and I own Peace of Mind Pediatrics together here. But she comes from a long line of just excellence in this community, the Evans family. You know, they're known a lot for basketball and her uncle, Dr. Wazir, was the community pediatrician for about 30 years. Her father was also in community medicine and she had that same spirit. You know, she was one of the people who were in the NCAA, in double A C P Youth Council, right? And, um.
They, they didn't double A C P Youth Council produced a lot of great.
Exactly, exactly. So Claire Luper laid hands on her and made her into a community advocate as well. So through, no matter what the vocation, all of those young people were encouraged to be active in the community and to be advocates and activists, you know, through their profession. So I love that about her. And then when we had twins before I was 30, by the way, you know, we came out here to visit and her mom was like, drop those babies off and get out of my way.
Get out of the way.
And I was like, well, okay. That might be a sign that we're supposed to be here because you know, back home, it was like, oh, they're so cute. Good luck. You know what I mean? So a lot of people, they're like, why would you move from Atlanta to Oklahoma? And I say, you know, I love Oklahoma. I love Oklahoma, not just because of my, my mama joy, but because the community, you know, I see so much potential. I see so many similarities too. Because I think a lot of people don't know that when Black Wall Street and Deep Deuce and all this stuff started getting dismantled, a lot of people moved to Atlanta and Atlanta is a, is a byproduct of that, of that movement. So there's a lot of kindred spirits here. I see a lot of parallels. I love the, the bang for your buck in, in real estate and all that sort of thing. And, and I just see so many people like yourself, Mr. Shelton, you know, I, I've been seeing you at banquets for a long time and admiring your work and, you know, 12 years in the house is no joke. And you know, and I just commend and I've always respected you and the work that you've done, Mr. Kevin Cox. You know, folks like that who kind of paved this way for us. And I'm just, I'm just ready to get in that ring myself now.
Well, let, let me ask you another question. Tell us why you're running for Ward Seven, City Council. And the second thing is, why don't you share with just kind of demographic area of Ward Seven?
Yeah, sure. So I'm, I love people. That's the main thing. And I mean, if you look at my, my, my campaign materials, if you look at the, the campaign website, you're going to see my main logo is Haq for Ward Seven, but you're going to see Haq for the people at the end of most of this stuff because that's what the driving force is. The people are the reason why we opened up Peace of Mind Pediatrics. You know, we want to take care of, of, of these families regardless of their socioeconomic circumstances. You know, you might see a, a binge truck outside right next to, you know, a beater. Somebody can be coming from Galardia, somebody might be coming from a trailer park and they get the same service no matter what at Peace of Mind Pediatrics because that's, that's what we're about. And from that perch, you know, we're able to, to hear firsthand, we're able to see, you know, what families are really experiencing. And, and you know, that person in that binge truck, they, they may be on food stamps and you don't question it because you just don't know what people are going through. But we're in a position where before the statistics come out, before the report is on the news, we're seeing it in real time, people needing, you know, coats, people needing something to, to eat, you know, and, and trying to meet that need in real time way before it's a trend, right? And we've been doing that for 10 years over there. The nonprofits that I sit on, the nonprofits that she sits on, I'm, I'm on the Black Chamber Executive Board, by the way. Before that, Care Oklahoma, I'm still the chairman of that board. I'm on the Northeast 23rd Street Enhancement Steering Committee with Brittany. And you know, from these, from these stations, I've been able to meet people and, and try to connect resource to those who need it. And I'm trained that, you know, I'm young, I've got a lot of energy. You know, we have to look at, if we're successful at leading 10 people, then we should probably try to see what it looks like to lead 100. If, if we successfully lead 100, what does it look like to lead 1,000? You know, in, in, in one of the hats that I wear for the Muslim community, you know, I was able to, to unite 10,000 people who people said it was impossible in this city. And so if we got 10, 10, we did 1,000, we did 10,000, what's next? You know, and, and at this young age, you know, to me, I have to maximize my potential and I have to do the most for the, the greatest good for the greatest number of people. So we took a look around and a lot of people have seen me speak. They've seen me organize and they've been encouraging me to run for office for years now. And I've always said, no, you know, Senator George Young is someone who I respect quite a bit. And he and I had a conversation at Florence's shortly before he, he announced his resignation. And he just told me to be mindful of the vacuum that his departure might create. And you know, we saw what happened with that and then the vacuum created a seat on the, on the Ward Seven City Council. And I said, hey, it's, 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 it must be my time. So I'm going in, I'm going to, I'm, I'm going to try to make those people who see me in that light, you know, try to prove them right. Now, the ward itself, I, I tell people all the time, the ward itself is a city unto itself.
It is.
Right? I mean, you've got everything that you could want in a city where the size of Las Vegas to begin with. Got Bricktown, which is kind of like the glitz and the glamour, like the darling. You, you've got, you know, to the, as far north, people think it's Edmund. You know, there's parts of Edmund that are still considered OKC. My children go to a private school up there, not many black folks up in that area. But we still have to be able to, to, to stay attuned with what their needs are as well. As far west as the village and we know the, the different enclaves that come, you know, within that. And then, and then all the way to Spencer Dungy where, you know, our, our, I love that area. I'll just be honest. Like I love that area so much because, you know, it, it has its own fingerprint. Like you won't experience that anywhere else. You know, I've spent a lot of time traveling this country. I've lived in New Mexico. I've lived in Atlanta. And to me, like Spencer Dungy, that, that area is kind of like a, a little bit of both, like put together.
Culture.
Yeah, it's got a little bit of everything. So I love it out there and I love talking to my aunties and uncles out there and trying to help them navigate some of the issues they're facing.
So speaking of issues that there, that, you know, your constituents, possible constituents will face, what have you been hearing on the doors like as you're knocking? What are some of the challenges in Ward Seven that you would like to address?
Well, you know, a lot of people, first of all, don't know what a city councillor does. A lot of people on the doors, like the people who are aware, sometimes you're delivering news. Like some people are like, oh, you're running against Nikki? And I'm like, no, ma'am.
Nikki is now your senator.
Oh, what? So Nikki's running against George? Like, oh, no, ma'am, George retired. Oh, what happened to George? Nothing, man. He just wanted to go back to church. So it's a lot of, it's a lot of just, you know, bearing news to people. You know, but what I want to do specifically is continue the trajectory that we're already on, you know, Peace of Mind Pediatrics, we take care of kids. We take care of families with children, you know, and, and I don't like to think about this in the sense of what I'm going to do if you guys elect me. I'm going to be pointing people to, look what I'm doing, look what, especially look at what my campaign is doing. You know, I'm not the, the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I will, I will, I will. I'm like, just look at my campaign. You know, just last week, two weeks ago, we had a youth empowerment symposium at ICE Event Center where we, we got together 12 different nonprofits that are focused on en- enhancing the lives and the social capital of our young people, the people who are going to be our future leaders. You know, I think we like to point at, oh, customer service is bad. Oh, people don't know how to look people in the eye anymore. These businesses, they're, they're falling apart. These black-owned businesses don't know what they're doing. But has anyone stopped to try to teach them the principles of being a good employee and good employer, customer service and the importance of personable relationships, all that sort of thing? So that's what we did. It was a beautiful event that by popular demand, we'll have it on encore in, in February. But the youth are very important. I know that our hands are somewhat tied in terms of the actual schools in the city council. But I mean, there's a lot that we can do to connect again, resource to need and empower those organizations that have the youth in their, in their, in their, in their purview, the ones that are trying to help them. Like I've done a lot of work with the Urban Bridge. I love Marcus Jackson. I love Les Thomas and what they're doing. They brought a group of kids to that, to that event. One of the other events that we had was we brought Michael Jai White. We brought a superhero to the east side and he came and spoke with those young people and poured life into him and told them. And I'll never forget, he said, "Street knowledge combined with book knowledge makes you unstoppable." And those people were just soaking every one of those words up. And I said, "We might have created 30 more superheroes on that day." Right? So that's what I'm doing. We gave away 6,000 pounds of turkeys alongside Perry Publishing and Broadcasting before Thanksgiving. You know, my visits to the Jelts and the McGuire Center have kind of like just ripped my heart open.
Everybody needs to go there.
Yeah. And I, and I really do believe that. And, and it, it makes me want to find solutions.
And that's a city property. I apologize.
No, I mean, seriously, it, it's, it's, it's crazy when you talk to those people and they have, they have leaks and they have mold and they have roaches and they have mice. And then, and then, yeah, bedbugs and they finally write a check for, for the building, a half a million dollars and guess what it's for? Exterior paint. Because they don't want to be embarrassed by the eyesore that it's creating for all this building and all the stuff that they've got going on. It's like there's writing on the wall about those facilities. But we need to be transparent. We need to be able to have real conversations about how can we transition them? How can we make them comfortable in the meantime? Things like that to me are important as an ambassador. And we'll get a little bit more into ambassadorship because to me, that is the crux of this job, being somebody who can bring attention to an issue. The yes, no part, everybody on this ballot can hit yes or no on prepared measures that have been, you know, planned for months and years and say yes or no on it. But we need ambassadors who can stir conversations, who can facilitate conversations, who can work rooms like Mr. Shelton does in order to get coalition, in order to get motion towards certain things like, hey, you know, in casual conversation, bringing up things that are necessary. And I feel like as far as ambassadorship, just look at the motion that people have. And I like my chances as people agreeing that I'm the best and most prepared ambassador for this position.
Well, let me just bring up, of course, we just passed a presidential election. And there's a lot of people turned off. They've turned off their TV. They're checking out. They say they don't want to deal with politics anymore because they've been let down. They've been, the system has let them down. And so my question to you is, what advice would you give somebody that is checked out? And you, you need them to vote for, in this special election?
Yeah. Well, I, I think that sometimes we're, we're planning, we're taking a, a one to two week planning mentality up against a system that's planning 100 to 200 years in advance. And people think that that's hyperbole, but I promise you it's not. Every, you know, I announced, I was the first one to announce back in April. Since then, apparently there's some sort of national, you know, candidate database where they assess everything. And I've been contacted by several people who say, you know, we see you as this, 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 and this. And they rank, they rank the, you know, they say you rank as a nine point four on this 10 scale and all. And it's Republican groups, it's conservative groups trying to, trying to feel me out for 10, 12 years down the line. So I'm like, instead of, you know, running and scrambling a couple of weeks before a presidential election, you guys have to start getting people who are capable at this stage and, and getting their ear now. Because a lot of people, by the time they get to that, that presidential election, they're, they're, they've got all kinds of special interests in their pocket. That's, they're not going to listen to you. But the reason why it's, it's important is because the things that impact you on a daily basis, on a weekly basis, are, are being decided locally. They're being decided at city hall. They're being decided at the state house. And the more that you get in tune with it, the more you'll understand not only who the people are who are making those decisions, but the importance of, you know, those, those complaints that we have. You know, instead of them being just something that we're saying just to, just to end conversation. Like I'm just trying to, there's actually people who can make it happen.
Absolutely.
You know, there's people who on, you ask about the doors, there's people, I'm like, well, it's really dark out here right now. Like what happened to this light? Oh, I don't know. They won't come out there. I'm, I'm sorry. Who is they?
Yeah.
Oh, the city. Oh, did you speak to your city councillor? No, I didn't know I could do that. Oh, yes, absolutely. You can do that.
And then there's, I think there's a, a level of voter, you know, education of who they need to contact and for what issue that they're having too. So we definitely need to make sure we're educating our voters on who do I need to contact for this? Is it city council? Is it my senator? Is it my representative?
Right. And, and just as a voter myself, you know, I, I think that if we, if we drive down 23rd Street, this is everybody's favorite example of Ward Seven, it's the heart of it. And, and whatever, whatever questions or complaints that we might have about what they see on 23rd Street, I, I need them to connect that to their vote. What did you do or who did you put in place that you felt could address this? Did you even vote because you felt somebody could address it because of the merit of this person? Or did you vote for other reasons, right? Because with, with that complaint, there is a reason behind it. So we have to understand that we have to vote for people who can get things done. People who are already doing things are the people who as an, as an entrepreneur, as a business person, I find the busy person to give more work to, not the one who's just sitting around doing nothing. Give it to the busy person. Give it to the one who's already knocking stuff out the box. They're going to figure out a way to fit it in.
To figure it out.
Because they're, they, the reason why they're busy is because people see that they can get stuff done. So all these things you have to consider when, when, when you're, when you're voting for local elections. That you, you don't have a right to complain about a lot of these different things if, if you're voting for superficial reasons.
Yeah. You mentioned the heart of the east side being 20, Northeast 23rd Street. So as the Renaissance is happening, as the streetscape is going on, I know we're included in those conversations just because we are active in that community. How do you foresee that as a council, as a councilman? What do you foresee that expansion looking like and how are you going to help with that?
Well, I, I think it's going to, it's inevitably going to be a hub. It's going to be one of the, the destination areas and corridors of our city. The question is, will the people who have benefited from it and been the most proud of it for all these years, will, will they be surfing that tidal wave or will they be crushed by it? Right? It sits at the most opportune part of our city, honestly. I mean, I mean, and, and people, they think I'm crazy when I talk like this, right? But Oklahoma City is the crossroads of North America. Not, not, not the United States of North America. 35 connects Canada to Mexico. 40 connects North Carolina to California. So boom, here we are, right here in the middle, right? And people, I've been in these rooms where people are absolutely salivating over that corridor that connects 35 to the state Capitol and to 235, right? They, they, they have a vision for it already. They're already parceling up the land or maybe even withholding some of the, the pieces of land and for somebody to come in and do a one fell swoop type of situation. You know what I'm talking about? Right? So we have to make sure that we are surfing that wave, that we don't get crushed by it. It, it, you know, we're playing with about what, 6.4 million dollars for that, for that streetscape. It's not a ton. It's a good start. It's a good start. And but it, it also allows you to have conversations with people who want this to be their pride and joy. Hey, this is a big league city. Oh, we're bringing the Olympics here. We've got new ribbon cuttings. You know, we've got a, we've got a mayor who wants, who loves wins. He loves, you know, to, to showcase the success of the city. This is the largest ward in the city. We're not going to be a great city if the largest ward is rotting. If, if, if anybody has the largest mass of flesh rotting, it's an unhealthy body. And, and we have a, a mayor who, who understands that, I believe, and we can use some of these initiatives. We put in money for them. Remember I asked them, Embro and them, and the city, can you, can we not talk about Kelly to Miramar? As if MLK to Miramar is not his own beast, right? So tell me what it's going to cost. How much is allocated of that 6.4 for, for MLK to Miramar? Give me a number that I can take back to folks and say, hey, if we don't address these nuisance businesses in this, in this part of this stretch of the corridor, then we're just putting lipstick on a pig and we're flushing this money down the toilet. So that number was 1.4 and, and I will use that 1.4 to just say, hey. And and I will use that one point four to just say, hey, can we chop this one point four up to make sure that we can relocate the folks who call. That hotel a home, because that was to me, uh, I heard one of the the reasons why the nuisance abatement wasn't applied in the past. I'm like, that ain't no problem, it's just a money issue, and if we got one point four to play with, I'd rather spend two hundred thousand on on that part. A- and and have one point two for the rest than to just put lipstick on that pig.
Let me ask you a question, I'm gonna ask you, do that, scoot this way about six inches, just so we make sure that you get on video, I don't want anybody to say we. But he he wasn't all the way on on the camera, so you all did that to him, no. But let me ask you a question, cause you given some great information. Let's talk about maybe two or three of the biggest challenges. In district, in Ward Seven, and but two or three of the assets. In Ward Seven.
Well, I'll I'll start with the positive, I I I think the community, uh, and just the pride, you know. Uh, you can't recreate that, people have uh an immense pride for, you know, the the this this ward and 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 the traditions. You know, I was a a part of, um, that Jewel Theater, um, unveiling, you know, uh, Miss Vanessa Morrison and and her group. They're spearheading that, it was an amazing thing, and she brought the namesake of it, uh, Miss Jewel. To speak about, you know, how it was in Deep Deuce and how many uh businesses were around there and. Uh, you could just see them just kinda brimming with pride, and that and that is the underlying fabric to me that all of this stuff is still thriving on. Um, and people, you know, they they may not know the how, how do we get back to that? But the want to is certainly there, and and I think if the right, um, if the right initiatives are in place. That it will have full-throated support from the community, so that that's an amazing part of it, I I do believe we've got great leaders. Um, within our community, um, with, you know, people who've sacrificed a lot, yourself included. Um, people who who have demonstrated through action and through service that they care about the people, they care about, uh, you know. The everything, every aspect of people's lives, and I can appreciate that. Um, what I do say is, in that same vein, I believe our leadership class is fractured, in in a way that's detrimental to the community. And I believe sometimes people are asked to pick sides, when really it should just be like, what are we all? What do we agree on, like, let's work on the things that we agree on. And use that to not necessarily be kumbaya, skipping, holding hands down the street all the time, but. Let's not get in each other's way, for sure, right, like, let's make sure that the people who are capable are are given. You know, a runway to do what they're capable of doing, you know, let's bridge gaps and things like that. Um, another challenge is, you know, I mean, it's it goes all the way back to redlining, you know, it's like. There there's a lot of of issues when it comes to housing and the way that it's regulated, and Brittany is more of an expert on those things than I am. Um, but but, you know, w- we have to make sure that home ownership is attainable for more people. We gotta make more opportunities, uh, for people to become more financially literate. And and understand how they can either secure grandma's house and and understand its value. And not, you know, succumb to the guy with the bag of cash on the porch, giving you about a third of what it'll be worth, yeah. Um, but then but then also, you know, eh, figure out ways to 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 get people. Uh, jobs in our community, because we always talk about public safety and and crime and all these different things, all that stuff is tied to. Tied to 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 jobs to me, it's tied to the inability to feed your family or yourself, so. You know, stealing or robbing or some of those other things become, uh, an option to you because survival mode, right? So figuring out ways to, you know, even if it's, um. Writing into a TIF or something like that where, you know, these businesses.
Educate, we wanna educate.
Exactly, that that, you know, we're rewarding the businesses that hire from within our zip codes. You know, um, we talk about the transportation issues, this city is the largest city. And we have, you know, we we've got some improvements that. I didn't say the other thing, I said, we have some improvements that we need to make, every city that's higher than us on that list has a train. Like, you know what I mean, at least north, south, east, west, to connect some of these bus stations and make it easier, because it's hard to to sell. You know, somebody that your sixteen year old is gonna get off work at eleven o'clock, and they may or may not get home, you know, using the bus every day. You know what I mean, so, or or if you're trying to attract a Fortune five hundred company, you're telling that VP that. Your sixteen year old has to have a car in order to get around the city, you know, it's problematic, so, I don't know if I answered your question.
No, you did a great job, no, you did a great job.
Absolutely, so we know Ward Seven is big, it's, we talked about it before, it stretches out east to Oklahoma to around Spencer. Which they often feel like they are left out, so you see, you talked about spending some time, got some family there. Um, give us some specific plans to, for that area that you would do as a councilman.
So, uh, it's it's the transportation issue for me, like, primarily, I mean, that's the biggest thing, I I don't think that they need a lot of help and 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 like. Living their lives and being and and being Spencerites, you know what I mean, and 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 doing what they do, but. I'll tell you from a personal standpoint, that, you know, when I was fourteen, fifteen. And the people around me were up to no good, and in order for me to escape all the fights and the police come in and. Dice games and shootings and all that stuff, I went and got me a job, I went and got a job in midtown. And 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 got on the bus every day, got on the train, went to work, came home, I would, during all the 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 violence would happen while I was at work. Um, so if 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 we're able to give people with initiative, with energy. To go out and and become something more, or just try to learn how to be an employee or how to be a business person. Uh, they've gotta be able to have reliable transportation, and that doesn't mean that you have to have twenty, thirty thousand dollars, you know, for a car, like, we we've gotta get them. Reliable transportation, I've had conversations with, um, Jason Firdrash and, you know, other people, um, about. You know, like, I I understand that it's a business, that embark is a business, and they're gonna look at, you know. Wh- where the most traffic is for any, you know, well-lit, nice, uh, bus stop. But I'm like, just consider altruism for at least one, and you just never know, like, people, like, even like Mary Mahone, at least not Mary Mahone anymore, but, well, it's community healthcare. Way out there, they have all those employees, and 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 if you look at that bus stop, there's no light there, there's no bench there. There's trash all over the place, the weeds are unkempt, so it's like, let's just just honor them with the sense of pride by putting something there that they can. Feel comfortable in, and you just never know, like, it might attract more people to actually utilize their services, but that's just one way, but we we definitely need. Uh, more transportation options out there with them, um, and and make sure that none of the the funds that should be allocated to them. I mean, like I said, the the largest ward should get the largest portion of MAPS funds, it should get the largest portion of everything that's coming to the city, that's just. Common sense, um, and and when we're talking about the largest ward, we cannot forget about the folks in in the Spencer and Dungy area.
Yeah, absolutely, but, um, so I can speak to the transportation, so. There are a lot of, um, new resources and new rapid bus transit systems that's coming to Twenty Third Street. Um, and so you mentioned, uh, Jason Firdrash and having those conversations, so we actually rode the bus. Um, so we could have real life experiences on someone who's riding and connecting, and it took hours for us to just get to. Just different places, we went downtown and then connected to, uh, Northwest Expressway, so we can kinda see their rapid bus transit system, it's on a dedicated line, and so. Um, the lights turn green, so it can continue to keep going, and so it's going to be brought to Twenty Third Street as well, so we kinda have. Those, um, upgrades, our buses, the buses look really nice, and so it's coming along. And along the Twenty Third Street corridor, like we talked about during the streetscape, um, they're gonna work in tandem with our streetscape. Um, and putting that bus system in, so, just talking about the facts. That the facts are in there.
Now, you now you've already kinda spoken to to this issue, but, uh, there, of course, there's the Twenty Third Street development. Do you see or have plans as city councilmen to expand that development anywhere else in the. Ward Seven area where some where other areas can benefit from it?
Yeah, I mean, well, we, those conversations start, um, you know, and I keep going back to this, cause. I just used to watch you, man, like, at at different events, like, you work a room like nobody, yeah, so, and and when I was just a nobody, fresh off the bus. I mean, fresh off the plane from Atlanta, you know, I was just kinda getting to lay of the land, uh, who was who. And, uh, I was like, alright, I'm I'm moving around like him one of these days, like, I thought I know more people, right? And and to me, those conversations, like, those those initiatives, they start in those types of rooms, just, you just never know who you're rubbing elbows with. Who's watching you, things like that, and 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 there's people, there's people, eh, like, not even related to government. People who can just cut a check for stuff, that if you have a good, a favorable impression on some of these people, and you tell them what you're passionate about. And you become passionate about something because you knocked on somebody's door and heard a story, whatever the case may be. That's, again, that ambassadorship piece that I'm talking about, so, it's like, the 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 Jelton McGuire is 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 near and dear to me, right? Um, I'm sure as I continue, there's gonna be other stories that I hear that are gonna make other things near and dear to me, but the main thing for me is that I continue to show up. In spaces, and I'm not gonna tell you that I'm gonna start showing up after you vote for me, it's like, ask anybody. Y'all see me everywhere, and that's the one thing that I love about the way Nikki Nice handled that seat. Was that she is of the people, for the people, you see her at the grocery store, you'll see her at the concert, you're gonna see her at City Hall. You're gonna see her at the State House, everywhere, so to what that did for me was tell me that she is doing what she said, she's doing her absolute best. And she can face the people because she knows that there's nobody who can eh get her with a, where, you know, gotcha. You know what I mean, and and to me, people who are not available for the people, people who are not champions of the people are scary for me in office. If you don't show up until it's time to uh ask for a vote, I'm like, no, we need, we need to keep that champion in that seat. Because that's the person who's hearing things on a real live basis, and it'll inform that question a little bit more, um. What is, what is next after Twenty Third Street? I can't, I don't wanna just say this is what I'm gonna do for sure, but I what I will tell you is that I'm listening, and that I'm capable of bringing stuff to the people. Through resources and through advocacy, through ambassadorship and through relationships.
I hear you, okay, so, I want you to just take a moment and I want you to tell people. Why should they vote for Masood Hock?
So you should vote for Masood Abdul Hock, because look, look at my campaign, look at what, look what we've done since April. You know, you've seen me at the both Juneteenth festivals, you've seen me out there talking to the people, you've seen me advocate for. Our our now Senator Nikki Nice, I'm an advocate, I'm a man of the community, I I have my ear to the street. And I'm able to speak the language of City Hall, I'm able to speak the language of of Hood Street, quite literally, right? Um, a- and so you need somebody to continue that legacy that that Miss Nice has established, she didn't establish, she continued it. Because Willa Johnson was was similar from, for, I never met her, but all by all accounts, you know, she was similar, your your mentor, Opeo Ture. A great, a great orator, um, and and community man, you need somebody who you already see around all over the place. My children are in OKCPS, um, my my son is on AET, um, that AAU basketball, you're gonna see me at those games. You're gonna see me at Douglas stuff, because Steven Alexander is my guy, because DeAndre Foster is my guy, you're gonna see me at Millwood because they're east side steppers. And all those people are my people too, and and it's not just that I'm saying this, check it out, go to my website, go to my my social media, you're gonna see me. Donating a law library to, uh, to Douglas High School, it's action behind what my words. If you go and look at what what we just did this past week, we gave away almost two hundred coats to the kids over at Millwood. We talked about the youth symposium, we talked about bringing a hero, a superhero to the east side, that's the kinda motion that I can create. Just off my own talent and and my own circle, imagine if you guys put me in city council. And I have a title behind it, I've got the headlines behind it, I've got the media behind it, um, and I'm able to galvanize people. Eh, around these ideas and this motion and inspire people, imagine if you had that in city council. So that's why you should vote for me, because I'm the one who was who's already doing it, my day one was twenty-five years ago.
Well, let me just tell you this, I appreciate you being here, you did, gave a great interview. I'm so grateful for you being in here, and, uh, Brittany?
Tell, I want, before we wrap up, I want you to tell everyone with your website, your platform, where we can find you, where we can follow you. And to see all the great things you're doing.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you can go to hockforwardseven.com, that's, uh, H A Q Q F O R. W A R D, the number seven, dot com, hockforwardseven.com, um, my my, uh, Instagram. I'll send you to my personal one, cause it's kinda lit, I'm not gonna lie, uh, Masood A. Hock, that's M A S O O D. A, H A Q Q, that's at Masood A. Hock, and it's the same on Facebook. Um, yeah, that's it, I mean, I I I also have Hock for OKC, uh, for the official campaign, if you guys like the more buttoned up approach.
We will make sure that we tag, uh, make sure that we add all of your handles for your socia- um, on this episode. But we just want, we wanna thank everybody for joining us, you can also find us, we will be on iHeartRadio, on Apple Podcasts, YouTube, Spotify. All of our social media platforms, we are so excited about all of these episodes and what's to come. We have other, uh, candidates that are coming, let me get my list out, so we have interviewed the infamous Masood Hock today. Uh, we've got Andrea Holman that is coming, Kamal Pennington, and John Pettis that will come in this series, they are all candidates for. Ward Seven, and so we are excited to hear from all of them and what their platforms are.
Election Day is on what day?
February the eleventh.
Again, thank you for being here, and we wanna thank those for the following us and tuning in, and just remember, this is a amazing day.
And let's go make the best of it.